Well, let's keep the order. Please all rise to your respective first class.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Merrimack.
Here.
Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Depot.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Monti.
Here.
Mr. McNally.
Here.
Mr. Spazov has been excused. Mr. Deloria.
Here.
Mr. Fleedy.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Marnell.
Here.
Mr. Montroy has been excused. Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mr. Tyler.
Here.
Mr. Gwilling.
Here.
And Mr. Preston.
Here.
We do not have any guests on the floor, so we will move to our resolution.
Resolution number 342, authorizing a contract agreement between Essex County Mental Health Department and Liver, KC Cuddy for nurse practitioner services beginning January 1st, 2019.
Moved by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Giadano, and this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Here.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Fleedy.
Yes. Would I maybe skip you there? I did that before. I'm so sorry. Mr. Monti.
Yes.
My eyes are...
All right.
I see you remember the crystal.
I remember the crystal.
Resolution number 343, authorizing a contract agreement between Essex County Mental Health Department and Families First to provide crisis services beginning January 1st, 2012.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 344, authorizing to enter into an agreement between Essex County Mental Health Department and the Mental Health Association to coordinate a crisis intervention team beginning November 15th, 2012.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by... Oh, sure, why not? There's Mr. Depot. Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 345, authorizing budget amendments for various departments.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. McNally. Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 346, appreciation to Elizabeth Town for its central school wellness committee.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by... Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 347, appreciation to the Mariah Central School Wellness Committee.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by... Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 348, appreciation to the Town Hall for its central school wellness committee.
Moved by Mr. Giadano, seconded by... Thank you.
Resolution number 349, in honor of Veterans Day.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by... Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 350, accepting, adopting, and placing in file policies, plans, procedures, and annual reports.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by... Oh, Mr. Depot. I was looking at that character next to you. Oh, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
Resolution number 351, authorizing the appointment of someone or recording Democratic Board of Corrections Pressure.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Depot. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
Resolution number 352, authorizing the District Attorney's Office to adopt a healthy food, beverage, and wellness policy.
Moved by Mr. Giadano, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
Resolution number 353, authorizing a contract between Emergency Services Department and Motorola in the amount of $988,100,000 for the Monton Tower project with funds department and state Intermodal Communications.
Moved by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Depot. Any discussion? Mr. Monti.
I'm curious as what the breakdown is for that $988,000, what that specifically goes for.
Um, I don't have the exact breakdown. Um, we can often personally report it down. I hope you have it. Don, you want to come up, please?
Uh, I don't have that breakdown for you, but I can certainly provide you with the entire breakdown of the budget.
Good, thank you. Anything else for Don?
Does that include part of the maintenance come out of this too?
No.
Part of maintenance? Any... goes over any of our maintenance contracts with Motorola?
No, we presently haven't made this contract with them, and this, in the next round, when we have to renegotiate, they'll probably add that in there. It wouldn't be a lot of money, but it'd be stuff.
Thank you.
We may not be certain of that, but it is.
Anything else? And, um, did we vote? No, we did.
So we'll tell. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 354, authorizing the Deputy Superintendent of the Public Works Department to research three potential fire training building sites in the town's southwest core analysis room.
Moved by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
Resolution number 355, authorizing appointments to boards, committees, and councils.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
Resolution number 356, changing the date to December 2018. Make the board meeting from December 3rd to December 4th.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Giadano. Any discussion?
Needed.
Well, if it doesn't pass, we'll go back to the after. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
Resolution number 357, authorizing the Community Resources Department to apply for the accepted grant in the amount of $500,000 through the dormitory authority of the state of New York.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by Mr. Tyler. Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 358, of appreciation and congratulations to Rick Lovitree upon his retirement as Executive Director of Essex County Cornea Clockwork Extension.
Moved by Mr. Harrington, seconded by... Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 359, condolence to the family of Robert F. Flack.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by... Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 360, authorizing contract amendments to Department of Public Works contracts.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Jackson. Any questions, comments? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 361, authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to bid or request control for the Department of Public Works.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Tyler. Questions, comments? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 362, authorizing the training department to purchase a Minolta business help printer slash copier from state contract in the amount of $10,415.40 budgeted funds.
Moved by Supervisor Moore, seconded by Supervisor Marnell. Marnell. Yeah. Any questions, concerns? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Mon... Montray... Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler. Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 363, of appreciation to Brenda Lepierre for her years of service to Essex County Clerk's Office.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by...
Second.
Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 364, authorizing the county chairman to execute champagne national bank account authorized signatures for the Essex County clerk and the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Jackson. This is a roll call vote. Is there any questions, concerns? Not? This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 365, congratulations to the town's junior assessor, Thomas Erickson, and town and north Hudson assessor, Michael Marsden, who recently re-recognized at the New York State Annual Assessors Association meeting.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oath, any discussion? If not, so carry.
Resolution number 366, authorizing information systems to purchase a virtual private network appliance that across net to exceed $10,000 for budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by... Oh, Mr. Merrimack. I'll get to see that actually. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 367, authorizing the levy and charge backs.
Moved by Mr. Fleedy, seconded by Mr. Gillen. Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 368, congratulations to the Mariah Central School Boys varsity football team for winning the 2018 New York State Public High School Athletic Association in Section 7, past the regional championship, and to Maddox Plays for being awarded the Most Valuable Defensive Player, and to Michael Rollins for being awarded the Most Valuable Defensive Player.
That was moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by... Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 369, authorizing the payment of $5,600 to Fiscal Advisors and Marketing Incorporated for the services rendered in connection with the $1,456,000 loan anticipation note for equipment purchases in the Department of Public Works from budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Depot. Is there any questions, comments? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 370, authorizing the payment of $3,252.50 to Aura Carrington in Suck Cliff LP for professional services provided from non anticipation note renewal in the amount of $1.505 million for budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Monti. Any questions, concerns? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrimack.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Deloria.
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Gwilling.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 371, authorizing the appointment of Allison McGee, Republican Board Elections Commissioner.
Moved by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Monti. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry. Congratulations, maybe?
Resolution...
This goes either way, it depends, you know?
Resolution number 372, of congratulations and appreciation to Lenita Canavan upon her retirement from service with Essex County Treasurer's Office.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by... Thank you. Oh, okay. That way. Thanks for allowing me to do this. I want to honor Lenita Canavan today for many years of service as her payroll person. This is one person that you can always depend on. She is the absolute most dependable and detailed person I've ever worked with. She sadly may be missed. I always tell everybody, there's nobody that's ever irreplaceable, but in this case, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that or not. We'll have to see. But I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate her on her retirement and her many years of service to Essex County. She was... Nowhere I wouldn't have been the kind of treasurer that I was. She was there to protect me and help me, and there always to do the right thing. Many times she corrected other departments that were making errors. So she will be sadly missed, but I want to congratulate her on her retirement. And her service.
Resolution number 373, a condolence to the family of Anthony T. Reo-Chinder.
Moved by Mr. Giadano.
Aye.
Get out of the second. Thank you.
Resolution number 374, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute transfer documents incident to the conveyance from the Community College to the county of Franklin and to the county of Essex of property bearing Town and North Ova Tax Map
Moved by Mr. Fleedy, seconded by Mr. Merrimack. Discussion? Questions? Discussion? Somebody explain this?
Sure, sure. Um, this is a request by Jim Brooks, who represents North Country Community College. The education law allows that the college itself can't own real property. It's supposed to sponsor on real property on behalf of the college, somebody in the town, or district, or so districts. And they're trying to consolidate all properties into one, you know, manageable tax map, or tax map numbers or such. And in the doing so, working with the assessor, they found a piece of property that was in the name of the college itself in Essex and Franklin County. This is just simply a housekeeping, uh, that, uh, transfer where North Country will convey it to Essex and Franklin County, who will own it on behalf of the college. That's all. And it just authorizes Randy or Dan instead to sign a TP584 or TP5217, kind of a work deal maybe. Now, Andre, it needs to be done.
So, um, what do we need for this approval?
Oh, yeah, just a...
Okay, moved by Mr. Fleedy, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Any further discussion and/or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oath, so carry.
That's... I have a packet.
Yeah. Do you want to... Do you want to do the resolution for the appraisal of the...
I think you should. What's asked for a resolution, authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to RFP for an appraisal on property, uh, accomplished, uh, community resources is situated right now. As you know, we've been in discussions with stewards relative to the possible purchase of our property in order for us to sell it. Uh, under, there's a local law passed in 1980 that allows us to sell to a specific buyer, not to have to go out to bid, provided by an condition that we get a two-thirds vote of the sale, and we get an appraisal, and sale price is either meets the praise value or exceeds it. So, I'd like to ask, so we... Yes, we need 12 on the floor.
Are there 12?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? I would like to know where we're going to move community resources to, if this helps too.
Well, as you know, we are building the addition down at, um, BFW, which would house community resources. That has not been started yet because we're waiting on the EPA amended permit to be approved. But we... What we're looking at potentially as swing spaces is to move them over into the Vacated Nutrition Building. That will allow us to be able to, get this started for stewards if they're interested in based upon market value. But I believe we can put them over in the, in the form of nutrition buildings.
Any further discussion? Mr. Fleedy, I'm just curious, is this a money thing?
Um, I think it's really, you know, whenever somebody comes to, um, the county with a proposal that it really probably most benefits the town itself. Um, I think that's really what this is about. It's an opportunity for the town to upgrade its, its current stewards facility. Um, and, you know, the reality is the county is sitting at the best location for what would essentially be a new stewards building.
Okay, no more?
Uh, yes, I'm very supportive of this considered development, and as the county manager has pointed out, we believe the redevelopment will, will at least be able to generate the sales tax and the other businesses that it'll be having a cost.
The other, the other thing that's, you know, it's not so much an issue for us because it's not our parking lot, but the way that the current stewards building is set up with the gas pumps, um, it's pretty regular for accidents to occur there. There's simply not enough room the way it's current is set up.
I don't have any issue with it. I just don't think that many of us are aware of...
I think once we got the...
Intention.
Yeah. Once we got the appraisal, I can give you a better breakdown.
Thank you. Any further?
Marnell.
Mr. Marnell.
The stewards didn't have any interest in the old nutrition site?
No, they, they really were looking keen on that one spot in particular, you know, right behind their existing building. I think their thinking is that, you know, if they could remain there, they could continue to operate the gas pumps while they work on the rest of it, you know, and lends itself best to that location. I think they're also looking at the facility, the traffic coming in and going directly out on that side road that kind of circles around the main road.
Mr. Harrington.
What are the assurances that the nutrition building will not continue to have mold problems?
It doesn't have mold problem, no. We removed mold from the facility. We cleaned it up. It's, it's now, it has been safe for quite some time.
Further questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Oath, so carry. So is there anything on the floor? Mr. Gillen?
I'd like a resolution, uh, to affirm the resolution from the, uh, Aaron Act Inter County Legislative Committee, um, concerning employing the, uh, AATV, Association of Towns, New York, uh, New York Council Mayor, uh, New York State, uh, Association of Counties, and New York State to come together with a plan to provide still coverage for all New York State residents and visitors.
Yeah, 12, put that on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Moved by... Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Monti. Questions or concerns? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Anything else on the floor? Okay, if not, Judy, um, can you remind us last day of the annual, the date and the time?
Yes, it's going to be December 27th. It's a Thursday at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, and, uh, as I did announce, um, I think the last regular board meeting, I have no intention on seeking chairman again, and I highly support, yes, Sean Gill, the man who's up, which I believe the vote is the first meeting in, um...
January's...
January. And Mr. Fleedy has shown interest in vice. I'll take assistant for you. Mr. Gillen, do you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, as just reported, we're be taking up the, uh, business memorandum from the, um, sort of the budget.
Sure.
Uh, basically what I prepared is a package of resolutions, uh, as a sort of guide, as a board, uh, which would enact these resolutions. Some of them that say sample are only samples in the event that there are, uh, if you decide to change the tentative budget as it exists now, uh, so we can, you know, we can... We'll go from resolution number one all the way through, uh, keeping in mind that some of those we not... will not...
Okay, I guess I'm going to push this on usually.
Resolution accepting the 2019 tentative Essex County budget, subject to amendment and final adoption of the 2019 Essex County budget.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Fleedy. I would believe this is a roll call vote? Doesn't have to be. Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
The next one is, um, a resolution amending the 2019 Essex County budget to increase appropriations by...
This would, uh... We would enact this if you were going to amend the tentative budget and want to increase any appropriation.
Mr. Gillen?
Yes, I just want to give you... We... The resolution from four could be anyone from resolution two to resolution six, if I correct, so we don't have to go through two, three, four, and five.
Uh, would you...
That's my one, that's my mandatory referendum, correct?
Four and five, yes. If you don't wish to do any of that, if you produce it and you see them, that means you concede to resolution number six.
I would, uh... I would like to propose, as opposed to move resolution to adopt resolution number six about the tentative budget, that's fine.
Do we have 12?
Doesn't need to.
You have to be 12, and I'm so confused.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Fleedy. Any further discussion? So this is not a...
No, it isn't.
Oh, now they tell me it is a roll call vote.
Now, if this gets adopted, well, that's adopting tentative as...
That's your vote.
Ready for a roll call?
Sure.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriem?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Debo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Jordiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gwinnan?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Next resolution is levying the 2000 county and town taxes and assessments, approving the completed tax walls, and directing the execution and delivery of the tax warrants.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Fleedy. Any questions or concerns? If not, this would be a roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriem?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Debo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Jordiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gwinnan?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution authorizing contracts for fiscal year 2019 for which funds are appropriated into 2019 Essex County budget.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Merriem. Any discussion? Questions? And this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriem?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Debo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Jordiano?
Yes.
Mr. Gwinnan?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution introducing proposed local law number one of 2019.
Moved by Mr. Fleedy, seconded by Mr. Gillen. Questions, concerns? If not, I would believe this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriem?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Debo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Deloria?
Yes.
Mr. Fleedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Jordiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Gwinnan?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Mr. Fleedy, a discussion? Does anyone have anything else? Call the public here and get it...
Yes, it does. You said public hearing date, and, um, we're talking about, um, nine, nine o'clock on Thursday, uh, December 27th, just before the last day of the annual...
Let's make it around 3:00.
All right, 3:00. That's part of that resolution we just passed, so...
Okay, is there anything else to come from the floor? Of course, of course. I just want to remind everybody, there's United Way Task Force meeting. It was supposed to be 11:30, but I think we can move it up. We can get ahold of everybody and do it immediately following. Um, I also want to remind, uh, my fellow supervisors that that challenge is still out there to contribute to United Way. Um, I've actually upped my number this year to $25 a paycheck, and I'm hoping I can convince my fellow supervisors to join me in donating to United Way because it's hard for me to go to a meeting and ask department heads if I'm not leading the way. And I look at all of us as being leaders in that regard, and I hope we would all contribute. Thank you. Mr. Preston? Well, okay, thank you. Um, now we have, uh, our attorney with something, just one little thing. We all know how that goes.
This won't take long, but I need to ask for a brief executive session relative to legal advice on a, uh, a litigation matter.
We have 12.
Yes, we do.
Moved by Mr. Gillen, seconded by Mr. Monti. All in favor?
Aye.
Propo... Or opposed? So carry. Okay, 10:55, and we are out of executive session, and no action was taken. So, um, I would ask, we're moving on to if there's anything else. Are we discussing this right now? Okay, if there's nothing else to come from the floor, we are adjourned.